Good evening, everyone. I call the Marlington Local School District Board of Education regular meeting to order on February 18, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America and to the Republic. One nation. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all. The reading of the mission statement. I'm Mr. Josh Hagan.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
This is a meeting. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Dr. Maine, would you please call the roll? You're on mute.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Mrs. Humphries?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Adoption of the meeting agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? Is there a motion that the Marlington Local Board of Education adopt the following agenda for the February 18, 2021 meeting?
I'm here. Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, 5-0.
Public participation. Dr. Maine, were any documents received for the public participation portion of tonight's meeting?
No documents were received.
Thank you. Old business. Dr. Schaeffler?
Good evening, everybody. Just a quick update for you. The lease purchase is underway. A lot of the draft or almost final draft documents went back and forth today between the attorneys at the bank and the attorneys at, our attorneys at Ricker Neckler. So I expect we should be wrapping that up next week. That's my hope. So everything is in motion and the contract with PlugSmart then will flow in with those as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion on the lease purchase update? New business. Dr. Mike?
I have a recommendation for you. Originally, my interim contract mentioned a superintendent bond. And we were changing treasures and in the process of making my new contract, we discovered that we didn't secure a bond, but I am covered as the superintendent over in the district's $1 million employee dishonesty insurance. So we checked with our insurance company and that that may belonging to that does fulfill the requirement for the superintendent bond. But I thought it was a good idea to discuss that with you and make sure that that was voted upon.
So a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to confirm that the current district insurance policy fulfills the requirement of the superintendent bond contained in the superintendent's employment contract.
I'm here.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll. Patty, you're on mute.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, 5-0.
Property valuation council. Some of you know that Stark County has been using Bob Morrow for this council for, well, as long as I've been around, you know, more than a decade, probably more than that. And originally, your resolution had included Mr. Markland for this with some discussion with Patty, with the board president. Since Attorney Morrow does all of Stark County and works hand in hand with the Stark County auditor, it makes sense to use Bob Morrow for this. I had some extension, extensive discussion with him today again, and he's on board and happy to help us out. So I think in the long run, that would be the best option for the district.
So a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation that effective immediately, Attorney Robert Morrow of the law firm Lane Alton shall serve as the district's property valuation counsel. A copy of this resolution shall immediately be sent to Lane Alton by the treasurer.
I'm here.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, 5-0.
And I think, Dr. Maine, would you like to talk since these policies mainly deal with your area? Is there anything you wanted to mention about Neola's new policies?
I can do that. Thank you. Dr. Schaeffler. I just like to mention that these two policies are just changes in federal regulations and the changes are just being consistent with our federal and state law. Some of the pieces and parts have been added, just for some clarity. If you read through, some of the words have just been changed. You know, assigned, afforded rather than accord. So it's just to update and align our policy with federal laws.
So a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendation for the first reading of Policy Number 6114, Cost Principles, Spending Federal Funds and Policy 6325, Procurement Federal Grants and Funds. And both of these are revised policies.
I'm here.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan? Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, 5-0.
Treasurer's agenda. Dr. Maine?
The first item, I, you have the regular meeting minutes for January 21st and also February 4th for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the treasurer to approve the minutes of the following meetings, January 21st and February 4th?
I'm here.
I can.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved, 5-0.
The Finance Committee report, I'll just give a brief overview. The Finance Committee met on February 10th for the purposes of discussing the fiscal year 2023 deficit that was submitted with the November forecast. Dr. Maine was able to rework the forecast with updated revenue and expenditures, which resulted in a much better financial outlook, and she'll be presenting those details shortly. Karen, did you want to comment from, make any comments from the meeting?
I just, to have clarity, it was good on the trend of our overspending at about 2 million a year, I think it is. So that should help us kind of focus in on what needs to be done. That is concerning to be that much overspending and then all the other things that we're facing, the additional things that we'll need to fix at the elementary schools that are not in the PlugSmart contracts. We've got a lot of things that we have to look at.
Patty, we'll turn it over to you to go over the new forecast and your explanation.
Okay, great. Thank you. I want to, I'd like to reintroduce Ryan Gazomi. He is currently the senior analyst for Forecast 5 and he works with us on our data, on our changes that we have recently seen in our revenue as well as our expenditures. I'd ask him to come tonight and be with us just to, to present some of those highlights that reflected in our updated forecast as well as, he can also model some scenarios of various options for us to consider. So Ryan, could you start with an overview?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
I can, yes.
All right. I will start presenting then. Here we go. All right. Do you see the screen okay? Yep. Okay. So what we wanted to do, we've been working since the last time we met and to present the November forecast, we have been meeting to go over monthly what's been going on with the revenue, what's been going on with the expenses. Is it trending towards the forecast or not? And so what we've done is we've come up with revised forecasts that you can see, this is called a simplified financial statement. And the reason we present it like this is because it really narrows in on what you need to see. At any time, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop. Stop me and ask them. You can see the district started the year with $6.7 million in cash, and that's a pretty healthy cash balance for the district. Right now, we're anticipating you're going to have about $24 million, almost $25 million in revenue with almost $26 million in expenses. And what that means is that you're going to be deficit spending this year. Basically, you're going to be dipping into your savings account into that cash balance of over $1 million. When we presented the forecast in November, this was a little bit worse of a situation. The district has benefited from some one-time funds as well as there's some ongoing costs that you're going to be able to capture some savings in. But the majority that I'll show you here in a minute of what's changed since November is some one-time funds that you're going to receive. As a result, you're going to end this year with $5.6 million in cash. You can see, starting next year, if you continue on the same trend with revenue and the same spending patterns that we have projected in the forecast, the district's going to have a 2-point, almost a $2.4 million operating deficit. And what that means is, is that your expenses are going to exceed your revenue by 2.4 million and you're going to dip into your savings and your cash balance again, which by the end of next year would reduce it to 3.2 million. The reason that we are looking at the forecast today rather than May is in November, in 2023, you're projecting a negative cash balance. And when that happens, the hot Department of Education sends you a letter saying, we need either a new forecast because some things have changed since the last one you submitted, or you need to submit a correction plan of how you're going to offset this deficit spending or this negative cash balance in 2023. If you continue to produce forecasts that show that, that, that your correction plan's not working, then you'll start to get additional letters and some state intervention. And that's when they can put you on track to look at fiscal watch, fiscal caution, fiscal emergency, which is the worst case scenario, which is a state takeover. What the district wants to look at here is this line, because when I used to be a school district treasurer and what I advise, like working with Patty is, I always like to have a balanced budget two years out and have at least 10% of my cash in the bank at the end of the year. And you can see, you guys are not going to, right now, have a, have a balanced budget. You'll be deficit spending and it's pretty significant by the time you get to 24. It's well in excess of 10% of the budget. And the longer that you wait to try and correct this and reverse this trend, the harder it is because of the larger that the deficit becomes. Before we get into that though, let's see what's changed since the November forecast. And so what I'm going to show you here is first on revenue. And what this table's looking at on revenue, this is the difference between the November forecast and the forecast that we're showing you today. So you can see, I'm going to highlight the major events. Tangible is up. And so what this is, is based on the values that we receive from the county, this is non-pipeline value. So this is going to be things like electrical lines and gas lines and phone lines, internet lines. You had an increase higher than what we anticipated. That's going to generate about additional 25,000 this year and almost $50,000 each year thereafter. So you can see, this is the difference between what you filed in November and what we're projecting now. You'll also notice a big ticket item here is your state aid is up about 223,000. That's because the governor announced last month that they'd be restoring a portion of the COVID cuts. And so you're going to get about $223,000 back. You do not see that out in future years. And the reason is, is we anticipated in 2022 that you would be back to your 2019 levels and we're still anticipating that. You're not there yet, a portion that's been restored in '21. But we are expecting that you're going to get back to your 19 levels. The governor just introduced his budget and that, in fact, is what he's recommending. There could be some additional wellness funds that we're kind of going to wait and see. The process now is going to go to the House. There is a funding formula that's been worked on for a year or so now by bipartisan committee. And the Speaker of the House has been involved in that. So it's likely that we might see that come into their proposal. And we could see that the Senate has a different proposal and then it goes to conference committee. So it could very well be July before we know what that funding formula is going to be. But right now, ours is mirroring what we've been thinking back in November and still now is maintaining what the governor's basically proposing until we know otherwise. You'll notice some reductions down here in all other revenue. And the reason for that mainly, you had, your tuition, your interest income came in a little bit lower than we anticipated, but the biggest factor here is your open enrollment is down from the previous year. And so we're anticipating that that enrollment, those lower enrollment levels are going to stay. Those are students from other communities coming into your school district. And so that's why you're losing about 122,000 a year. It does increase slightly each year moving forward because we did have inflationary growth built into those projections. So when we pulled it out, it also takes out that, a smaller portion of inflationary growth. The largest change is some additional one-time money here. And that's going to be, you guys had a school bus grant that you got that was received in. You sold some laptops and you got some additional money in BWC dividend slash refunds on top of what we thought you were going to get. And so that's what makes up this 628. What's important to see here is, on the revenue side, the restoration of state funds and this grant slash sale of assets down here refunds is all one-time money. So it helps you out this year and it helps your cash balance out, but it's not going to help you in futures with that operating deficit that we were talking about. Those are the main changes in revenue. You can see that your revenue projections for this year are going to be higher in total by about 755,000. And then there are going to be about $77,000 less next year and around that each year moving forward, mainly because of the, the lower tuition levels for open enrollment. On the expenditure side, we have not made a lot of changes. As we get closer to the May forecast, we will see how things continue to trend. Two items that we did change, you were able to use some additional wellness money that you had freed up to pay for some more of your counselors' salaries than was anticipated. So we have put that in '21 and '22. There's a little bit of effect from the retirement, the savings down here and benefits as well. But that's the difference in salaries as of right now. And then you have down here, other objects, about $81,000 less this year and then 75,000 moving forward. What that is, is your county ESC cost came in less than what they were last year. Those can fluctuate at times. It's been pretty consistent all year. So we're pretty comfortable stating that they are going to drop this year. And then working with Patty, her thinking was, is that you're going to continue the same levels that you're on for this year. So you could expect those savings in future years as well. So all in all, you do have some savings and the forecast is slightly better than it was in, in November. However, the one thing I do want to show you is the trajectory that you're on. And so we're just going to do a comparison between the May forecast, or I'm sorry, this forecast now, the November forecast. And I want to show you on the cash balance side. So this is, this line down here was your cash balance in November. And the projecting, what we're projecting, and you can see that's where it falls below zero in 2023 here. You are slightly higher than that now with this forecast that we're anticipating. The, I think what's important here to see though, is that your trajectory is not changing though. You are still going through your cash balance quite quickly. And the fact that you had a large cash balance going back a couple of years is basically what's keeping the district afloat. If it wasn't for that large cash balance, your, your financial situation would be deteriorating quite quickly. And so Patty had asked that I present this information and then really wanted to talk with the board and get, we can do any types of, different types of modeling. You basically have three options in the district. Next year, you're going, when you submit your forecast, if you were to submit the same forecast we're proposing for May, you're going to get another letter. The difference is, is rather than being $700,000 in the hole for cash like you were this year, next year at this time, that cash deficit, which means your savings account is gone, you have no money, which, which can't happen, you're down 3.1 million. And so that's going to be a lot bigger hurdle to overcome. And either you plan for that now and try and address it, or when the state sends you a letter, they'll demand that you send them a letter saying how you're going to fix it. You have three options and that is, you can look at reducing expenses, you can look at increasing revenue, or you could look at a combination of both. When your district is looking at, if one option is, well, what is our options for increasing revenue? One of those is going to be, well, you don't have control over the state budget and it's not likely that you're going to get any large increases in state funding. You are going to get some S or 2 money from the COVID relief. And Patty is looking with the ODE now to see how exactly you can spend that. There is a real possibility you're going to be able to use some or all of that to offset some of next year's costs. What's important with that though, and we can model that, is that's only one-time cost. It's still not going to be enough to change your trajectory and it's not ongoing revenue that's going to help fund those expenses if you do move them. So all it's going to do is put a temporary Band-Aid on the issue at hand. And it's still going, you still would not have enough relief from that to offset that negative deficit in 2024. When we file a forecast next year, that will likely still be there. So some of the things that we can also look at is what else is going on with your, with your revenue? Where else do you get your money from? This is how the district's revenue is broken up. And you can see here in orange, this is state revenue. If we take that out, you basically are left with, in the general fund, your real estate taxes, your tangible personal property, which is your pipeline and your public utility taxes. And that's what's making up all this blue area here. Besides that, you have very little revenue coming from other sources that is going to, that you can control. So one option the district does have is a, is a levy. The other option that you have is looking at expenses and we can look at expenses down here. What you see here in orange and blue, this is salaries and benefits. So this is employees. Obviously, that is the vast majority of your budget. We can talk about the third largest purchase services here in a minute, as far as what's controllable. But once, if we take those out, so we put salaries and benefits aside for a moment and we take out purchase services, and we're going to get back to those in a second, you're left with supplies, very little in equipment. And then this here is your transfers out of the general fund. When you're looking at supplies, the district, that is some costs that you can control there. It's not going to, if you cut out all the supplies in the district, it's not going to fix your budget situation. But let's just take a minute to think or to look at what supplies are. This is not only going to be instructional supplies and textbooks. This is going to be cleaning supplies as well as it is going to be things like your fuel for transportation. And it's going to be any other type of miscellaneous. So when we look here at the breakdown of what your supplies are, what you can see here in pink is what you spend in total supplies and this is the year you're currently in. This is transportation. This is going to be custodial and maintenance. This is your instructional and office supplies. And then this is textbooks. Not a whole lot of areas you can control here. Obviously, you have to maintain instructional programs in the school district as well as, especially with the environment, where with COVID, the cleaning and the transportation, filling your buses and getting kids to school. Is there room for possibly cutting some costs here? There absolutely could be some. It's probably not going to be significant enough for you to, it might help if you do a budget reduction plan, but it's not going to put a significant dent in that budget reduction plan. When we look at things like purchase services, what are those and what can you can control? The largest amount of your purchase services here is tuition. And for the most part, that is not a controllable cost of the district. Charter schools, open enrollment out, private placement for students that you might have special needs that the district doesn't have the ability within the district, so they contract out to pay for that. Foster care students that are going, the residents of the district, but they have been placed elsewhere. These typically aren't something that you can say, we're going to cut that by 10%. It's outside of district's ability. So if we take that out, we are looking here at the purple area, that's going to be utilities. So typically, don't have a lot of control. Might get some cost savings if you do some of the improvements that you're talking about. But overall, you're probably not going to see any significance, the ability to cut some significant costs here. Communications, this is going to be things that deal with your internet and phone lines, really not a whole lot of ability to control there. And then, so what you're left with is, this is your repair cost and any rentals that you have, leases on things like copiers and stuff. And typically, you don't have a lot of control there because you're having to do repairs annually. What you're left with is your contracted services that are just under $1 million for the district. Now, contracted services are going to be a couple of different things. It's going to be services that you might pay the ESC for things like your OTPT sites, your special ed preschool. Those are going to be significant portions of your costs there. Legal costs are included here, any staff services you're contracting with. So there might be some room in there that you guys, if you said you want to do a budget reduction plan, may be able to look at. It's probably not going to be significant. For your district, the majority of your cost is going to be in salary and benefits. Is the only place that you're going to be able to really find and to produce large savings, but that might come at a cost of your programs. Those are things that you have to decide as a district, that someone like me as a consultant can't tell you what to do there. There might, you might have right now nowhere room to cut without cutting the programs and harming the students. That may not be an option. Those are things that you have to discuss. Without that, you're really left with, this is your transfers out of the general fund. This would be the only other place. I know you guys are planning on, have a lot of improvements that need to happen. This would be really the only other place that you could look at. So before I go any further, I'd like to hear if you have any questions, anything that you want me to show you. I can discuss what, if you wanted to look at, well, what does a levy look like? If we wanted to raise this money, increase revenue, what does that look like? We can go over a couple of different descriptions. We can go over a couple of different descriptions of that as well.
I just wanted to comment on the transfers from the general fund, um, and the board has voted to use that money for um. Remodeling the um two elementary buildings and uh, the goal is of course to get that paid within. A three-year period or a little over so that we can save on interest money and save the district money that way, get these repairs in place so that uh. It would reduce our repair costs. So um, that money is earmarked for that. Have you gone through our expenses in detail so that you could make recommendations as to what? Dollar figure we could anticipate would be a reasonable amount of uh. You know, um, reducing our expenses?
I mean, in um. The, it is hard for me to say the district can cut their way out of this and the, the reason I say that is. If I look at um, if we look at this line here. If you're looking even at twenty twenty three and let's say the goal was have a balanced budget in twenty twenty three. Two point nine million dollars in reductions, even if, if, if you put that in terms of, of staffing. It, it's a considerable number to get that to zero. It, it would be difficult, not impossible, I've seen districts do it. To reverse this. You would have to look at some um, pretty hefty, you, you're going to have to look at personnel in order to, to get this to zero. You're not, go ahead.
Yeah, it would seem that. The logical choice would be to do it with a combination of increased revenue and some um cost-cutting measures. We have been in deficit spending, the district's been in deficit spending for. I'm going to say at least the last six or seven years, so this didn't occur overnight, it's occurred through, you know, a variety of spending. And not, you know, cutting costs, so you know, it's, we are going to have to address this issue. I just was curious as to what would be a reasonable figure that you thought we should aim for, for the cost-cutting portion. And before we would start talking about what we need for additional revenue. And it has been, I think, I think Dr. Mike said eighteen years since we passed a uh, a levy for operating money.
I, I think the, the way that I would look at approaching that is coming up with a mileage amount that you would think would be acceptable and then. Then looking at if, if you think this would be an acceptable mileage amount to community to pass. Then this is the additional amount that we're going to come up with cost-cutting then. And I think at that point, what we, what I would recommend is working with the, the board. Patty and the superintendent, because you guys are going to know the academic side of the house. I'm definitely not an expert on the academic side, it's easy for me to say you need to cut this much in staffing. But at what cost on the academic side is the difficult part, so those conversations kind of go hand in hand. We can model anything as far as here's staffing, here's, we're going to reduce supplies, hold off on, on this type of thing. We can come up with those without a doubt. But really we'd want to have in-depth conversations and what does a budget reduction plan look like and what areas, every district's a little bit different and what those um. What, what things are off limits, what things are kind of okay and what things, yeah, you can go ahead and look at those and I'd want to have those conversations before I recommend anything.
Well, it just would seem to me that it would be important for us to look at all of our costs to see where anything could be reduced. First, and it would be more palatable then for the community to say, okay, you've done your part to reduce costs. So the next step, I, I, I would think you would reduce costs first and then figure out the mileage, I guess that's what uh. The order I would think this should be done rather than the other way around.
Sure, and we can absolutely do that, we can, we can, um, I, I think the. The most constructive way probably to do that is work with the superintendent. Um, and, and his administrative team to figure out and your different buildings, where are areas that we can possibly. Reduce costs, um, add a minimal cost to the students. And to the community and working with things like maybe your transportation or custodial department and saying, what areas do you think? We have areas that, where, where can you cut costs at? In the specific departments, because those are the people that are, are closest to the operations and know. Nobody wants to give up a piece of their budget, but if I have to, this is an area I think I can do it. Coming up with that list, identifying those costs, putting it together and then modeling it for you and showing you. We've met with everyone, here's what we think we can cut. This is what we might need new money, new, new revenue then to offset the additional amount.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Of that amount that you were talking about, the transfers out that um have been um. Designated at this point for repairs to the elementary schools, what could be cut of that amount? Is there an amount that you can tell us that would help us? You know, it, it's just in the interim, because it seems to me like the next few years. As you said, you know, the longer you wait to reverse the trend, the harder it is to correct. So the next few years are highly important. Do you have any, you know, if we cut that in half? That amount for those repairs, would that help us significantly?
These type, these are the type of things I can definitely model for you. So, I'm sorry. Let me go ahead and that's something I can show you and then, you know, just for illustration purposes. So right now your advances are, let's say, one point four million after this year, and I'm assuming most of this year is spoken for. So if, if you cut that um by seven hundred thousand, let's say. And we can do this for any line in here. So now you can see that that's pretty much in half. If we want to say, well, what does that make, what does that do to the forecast? You still would have um about a one point six million dollar issue in twenty twenty four that you'd have to correct just to. Offset that next year's letter, let's say from the O D E. You're still, your operating deficit you can see here is still quite significant, um, you're still north of two million dollars starting in twenty twenty three.
And um, I, I was actually ask you something similar that um Karen did. The, you, you had pointed out that the E S S E R funds that we're going to get this year. Uh, aren't going to affect the trend, um, it's just going to push it out a little further. But wouldn't you say that that's the same case with the Nexus funds as they're, you know, a limited time? The trends, the spending trend is still going to remain the same. We're just going to push it out towards the edge of a cliff and then fall off if we went that route and didn't take any other. Any other, uh, make any other changes to, to slow that down.
Sure, so um, that's a great question, let me go ahead and take out what I just put in for the, let's just say for the sake of conversation, we take out. That seven hundred thousand I just put in. And what we want to look at here now is your revenue. And so for your revenue detail, we've already included the reductions um in your Nexus money. Which is going to be in orange here, so you can see that you have your, starting in twenty twenty, you started to increase and you can see it decreasing. So after their appeals, this should be a level that you're going to be operating on. But we have absolutely included those reductions in here moving forward. If they're successful now, if they're not successful, we could be at least a year out from knowing that. Your picture may change, but it's probably not something you want to, you know, hang your hat on. For the sake of conversation, if we said, what does it look like? Let's just say um, the O D E says you can use one hundred percent of your money, your S R money to offset general fund. That could be something Patty's working on now, that, that might be something, so what does that make the forecast look like? So I'm going to put in just, we're going to put in salaries, it might have happened in salaries and benefits, but for the sake of the conversation, it's not going to affect. What we're looking at here. So I want to put in all one point eight million that you're going to get and say. You get O D E approval and you're going to take it out of salary and benefits, what does that look like? And so let's go ahead and look at this statement again with those taken out. And so you can see in twenty twenty two by using those, your operating deficit goes down from where it's going to be this year. So in twenty twenty one, you have an operating deficit of nine hundred and fifty one thousand, it only goes to. Half a million dollars, let's say in twenty two. But then twenty three, you're back at that full um. Operating deficit area and that, and that's what I meant, it helps here, and if we look at your cash balance, it does. If you're able to supply all one point eight million, it is going to help your, your cash balance here. You're still living with outside your means and you still have an issue that needs to be addressed. In the near term here and a longer term issue here. Hopefully that answers.
Yes.
Just for the sake of conversation, I know that this is not the way that you guys want to go, just so I can illustrate it. On my screen here, we did do um a levy assessment for you. If you were to say, and I, I know this is not what the, the district's thinking, but I just want to show you for illustration purposes. What would, if we wanted to fix this one hundred percent with a levy? If you were to go this year between May and November twenty one, you would be between six point three five and seven point five seven mils. If you were not successful in passing one till twenty two, you're looking between seven point five seven and eight point one nine. And you can see it almost grows to nine mils um in this target range by twenty twenty three. Just wanted to show that for sake of illustration. Obviously, um, if the board's thinking we want to do more of cost-cutting and then looking at this after that to see. What else do we need, these numbers are going to significantly change and we can model any of that at that point.
Um, just a one more conversation on the transfers, I mean, those were set up uh by the attorneys Booker and Eckler. And at their recommendation that, that the Nexus money when it came in be transferred out to the capital project funds, which is what we did. And we are using that then for our capital projects. As far as cutting the project in half, we have already committed to fixing both the buildings at the level that we did, so. The money from the Nexus would be needed for the three to three and a half years to get that paid down and save the district money. Part of doing the uh two buildings together was to uh make sure all our elementaries had uh. Improved facilities and it will cut some costs, will cut a repair cost down and save us a little bit on utilities. So uh that money is needed to repay that is, you know, as we've told the community and that it would be paid back as quickly as we could. Um, and then the Nexus money is finite, I mean, barring us getting extra money when this is um finalized, which we. Hope for but don't know, if we just look at today's value, the Nexus money will continue to decline over the years, so for us to use that to. Support the operating budget is not going to fix the problem. So I think we do need to address looking at our expenses and looking at some operating money.
The one, just for clarification, after let's say twenty twenty four, does the board still anticipate? Transferring out one point five million or is that month go down? The only reason I ask that, that, that could be part of your equation if. Twenty five and twenty six, you're not looking at transferring out the one point five. Then that might go into part of your financial recovery plan, if you will.
Well, Dr. Mike had put together um about a ten-year um period of looking at different things that need repaired. So there are some large ticket items that will need done, so I mean, we're looking at the high school roof will need. Done and we have a wastewater treatment plant that may need replaced, so we do have some large ticket items, so um, I would think after year three. It will be used, it will be needed for other large improvements to the district.
Okay, and, and my, don't get me wrong, my uh, my goal here is not to tell you to not transfer money or to transfer money. Just to simply help you um illustrate the costs and the revenue of the district and see where it's going. Whichever way you decide to go, I'm here to help you, um, whether it's the revenue, the expense, the combination of both.
Right, now if, once this gets settled, once the lawsuit or the challenge gets settled and we would get more money, I mean, that could change the picture. For the short term, but we still need to, I think, look at our expenses. I think it's been quite a while since the district has actually looked at, analyzed every expense to see. If we're um, being as efficient as we can.
And we have a number of different ways to help you with that as far as benchmarking, comparing your um operating expenses to other similar districts, area districts. Where you might have outliers, where you might not, um, every district's different. Um, I always give the example, when I was a treasurer of a district in Caga County. You could cut anything in that district, but if you cut the synchronets, you or me ran out of town. And I don't know another district that had synchronized swimming, but it was sacred there. And so I never go into a district thinking, hey, this is something can be cut because it might be something sacred and only the people that live there and that run the district know that, so. All right, any other questions for me? The good news is you have, you're going to be able to submit a updated forecast to the O D E. That's going to get you past this year without having to do a financial recovery plan. We're going to continue to work on your um forecast in May. If the district's ready before then to start looking at um. Where potential cost-cutting can happen and look at a budget reduction plan, we're ready to assist you with that. Either before May or after May, um, just let us know.
I don't have any questions, but maybe just a couple of comments on the, the topics and, and most of this you've heard me say before. First, Ryan, thanks for being here, you, you do a nice job of explaining uh things and that helps, that always helps. It's nice to have outside eyes look, uh, look in. I think the district has reduced some costs over the years. I also think there are, there are places we can reduce more costs. But I always caution people, at some point you get to the point where you can't reduce anymore or it's going to be devastating. So that's something we need to keep in mind and I, I've said before, we're still looking at all areas. And then uh, you know, I think that, that to sum up our conversation, our district needs a, a levy, a new money levy. So we need to keep talking about that. And I, why I bring that up again is I just want to make sure everybody understands. And Ryan will probably back me up on this, this is not Marlington's story, this is almost every district in Ohio's story. Our funding is such that a school district has to go into deficit spending and then they have to pass a levy. That's the way Ohio school funding works, not so much in most of the other states, but in Ohio. So um, I think I'm going to tell you from a guy just coming in. Eighteen years is a long time to go without asking for new money. So the district has, has done some, some very good things over the years, so um, those are just uh some comments that I had.
If, if there are no, no more questions. I'm going to thank Ryan, Ryan, you do such a good job at putting all this together. And isolating those pieces and parts so that we can just get the information we need um in moving forward. And um, I really appreciate you presenting this to the board and giving them, um, showing them how, how various options um might affect us. So thank you very much.
Thanks for having me and um, talk to you guys soon, thanks again.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just, just a comment. I just thought it was important that you saw those in-depth conversations that we have ongoing from month to month. About those revenues and expenses and how they're lining up with our forecast. And have that opportunity to say what if. So you know, I, I hope that was informative and um, I hope that you got to ask all your questions that you need. We can always do a future planning session if needed with, with Ryan, he is a, a, he's just, he's just a great person to consult with.
Patty and Dr. Mike, I appreciate your work on that as well as Ryan's, um, it was uh, good information and um. I mean, it's good news that we're in a better financial position right now, although that does not eliminate our need to um. Do future planning with reducing expenses and looking at possible additional revenue. Is there a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendation for the amended by your forecast as presented in marked exhibit K?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gaboric?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved five zero. The, the next item is to approve the financial reports. Exhibit L and M.
There are motion to approve the treasurer's recommendation for the financial reports. An overview of receipts and expenditures for the period ending January thirty first, two thousand and twenty one is presented in marked exhibit. and overview of receipts and expenditures for the period ending January 31st, 2021, as presented in marked exhibit L and exhibit M.
I'm moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Patty, did you want to go over that?
Yes.
Anything in those reports?
I just wanted to, L is our, you know, our cash balances as always. M, we do have a few expenses that we are still, some of those COVID funds for, so I like to highlight those. For example, we have some extra Acelis licensing for remote learning there for international academy. We also have Verizon Wireless that those are also from our broadband grant, which was a COVID-19 one-time relief grant. That has really helped us to provide some of that internet for those families who need it. I believe that was all, unless you had questions.
Are there any questions?
Did we receive a new bill from Attorney Marking?
We have not.
Oh, okay. Should have come toward, that would be through the end of January.
Okay. Patty, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved five zero. The next item are some donations for January.
Is there a motion to approve the donations for January 2021 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Patty, would you mind reading through the donation list?
Thank you. The first one is an anonymous donor from Marlington High School for $200. The next one, we also have a donation from Mary Beth Bach for the high school for $450. Additionally, Tom Green has donated $250 to the Marlington High School in memory of Keith and Ken Schumaker. And Donald and Connie Pettit has also donated $100 to the Marlington High School and that is for the horticulture program.
Is there any discussion? I wish to thank all of our donors and please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries? Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved five zero. The next item is changes, as you can tell, or as you can see, we had some adjustments for our updated forecast and we are just going to reflect those in our updated revenue revisions and appropriations revision for exhibit N and O.
So a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendation for the budget, the revenue and budget revisions as presented in marked exhibit N and O.
I'm moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Five, approved five zero.
Personnel, Dr. Mike?
Just two classified substitutes to approve tonight, Jansen Foster and Billy Ray.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to hire the individuals as presented?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved five zero.
Dr. Mike, do you want to read the announcements?
Yes. So just so you know, our vaccine clinic went very well Tuesday, so our staff was able to receive first round vaccination. And then March 9th will be our second vaccination. And then we've been advised to have a calamity day on the 10th. I have to tell you, virtually everybody came to work after the first vaccination day. We had a lot of people with headaches and hurt arms, but they hung in there and came to work. Usually the second shot brings a little more on the side effects. So we're doing a calamity day also on the 10th. And just a quick thanks again to the health department. The clinic was great. They've done an amazing job. That's the Stark County Health Department for us. And then it's hard to believe, but we're knocking on the door of the end of the third nine weeks, March 27th. So we'll be three quarters of the way through the school year. And that's all I have.
The next board meeting will be March 4th at 7 o'clock and the following one, March 18th. Are there any other announcements? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
She fell off the call.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Approved four zero.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Hi, everybody.